Get to it, Mayor.
Is there a motion to go back into regular session?
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to come back to regular session.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to go back into regular open session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. What happened to our attorney? I guess we're just not going to take any action on any of the discussion. So is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the workshop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And it is 4:31, so it's okay. We'll just move right into the next meeting. So I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. It is 4:31. And today's date is May the 22nd, 2023. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza?
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata?
President.
Councilman Aviel Flores?
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela?
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if I can have everyone please stand for the invocation pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we pray that you comfort everyone who finds themselves going through physical and mental pain. We pray that you grant them with improved health and safe living conditions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay. The next item is the disclosure of conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, was anything signed or presented? Okay, thank you. We'll move right on to the presentations, and the first one is a presentation of the VMHS Patriot Stars Drill Team.
Mayor, council, young ladies, I am pleased to announce that the Veterans Memorial High School Stars Drill Team competed in the national competition, and they made program history. The team is coached by Ms. Yahira Ortiz, and they were, it's really complicated. Maybe Ms. Ortiz can explain, because in some of these things, they got champions, but yet they came in second place, nationals overall, so they're silver medalists. But in the national solo competition, champions, ninth and 10th grade division, was Jackie Salazar. She was the champion on that. On the small jazz ensemble, they were national champions. The medium contemporary ensemble, they were national champions. And on officer awards, in the medium, they were medium jazz national champions, medium contemporary national champions, medium prop national champions. They got the judges' award for choreography, they got the presentation award, sweepstakes award, 85-plus points in all dances, medium division national champions. In the team awards, they were national champions in medium contemporary, national champions in medium hip-hop, first runner-up in medium pom, first runner-up in medium novelty, best in class across all divisions. They got the judges' award for technique, judges' award for choreography, presentation award, entertainment award, showmanship award, and sweepstakes award, 95-plus points in all dances. I think they're national champions, to be honest with you.
I agree.
But of course, I wasn't the judge, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yahira Ortiz, and I am the proud director of the Veterans Memorial High School Patriot Stars. With me is our assistant director, Ms. Gigi Sanchez. It is an honor to be here today, and we thank you for having us. This season, the Patriot Stars organization is celebrating 20 years of excellence, and this year has been by far the most successful. This group behind me has done a tremendous job representing the organization in itself, their school, and the city of Mission. This past April, the Patriot Stars competed for the first time in program history at the national level. It is our honor as directors to say that they received numerous first-place awards at their regional and national competitions this season. Our season starts in August and barely ended a couple of weeks ago, so we are a non-stop organization. Their accomplishments prove that with hard work and dedication, anything is possible. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the HT Dance Nationals Champions, the Veterans Memorial High School Patriot Stars.
Congratulations, and we do have medals that we would like to give each and every one of you on behalf of the mayor and the council, you know, for representing not only the city of Mission but the Rio Grande Valley. Thank you all so much for being the representatives out there, and more importantly, because you are for Mission, so thank you all so much for that.
Thank you.
Ma'am, and how many are seniors?
We have five seniors.
Oh, okay. Congratulations.
No, they're all the same.
Oh, they're the same, okay. Yeah, you know what? Maybe Victor will need that announcement.
Where is he?
I lost it. Which item was that? It's on the back side, right? Where's the item number 19? Is it on the podium or?
Source since it was numbered 19.
Can I announce that it's been rescinded? Before we move on to the next proclamation, I'd like to announce for some of you that are here for item number 19, which was the tabled conditional use permit for home occupation of sale of firearms at 3106 Granite Drive. The applicant has withdrawn his application, and so that is no longer an issue. So we will not be discussing it at today's meeting because the applicant has withdrawn. So you're welcome to stay, but I know there's things to do. Thank you for being here. That was good, Norrie, that you said. Made room for. Okay, so the next item is, Ms. Carrillo, Elder Abuse Prevention Month.
Mayor, council, with us today, we should have Ms. Norma Rodriguez from Adult Protective Services, Di Ochoa, Daisy Fuentes, Jennifer Villegas, Adriana Ibañez, and Juan Besa. I don't know if they're, are you all here? Hello, thank you for joining us. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. Whereas as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. Whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. Whereas abuse affected more than 119,448 older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in 2022. Whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. Whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. Whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Mission and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Proclaimed on this the 22nd day of May 2023.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Garza and commissioners. Let me first thank you for proclaiming May as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Mission. The U.S. Census Bureau has pegged 2034 as the first time in U.S. history that older adults 65 and older will outnumber younger people. This fast-growing population is expected to strongly impact our families and communities. Older adults are vital, contributing members of our society, and everyone deserves the right to live free from abuse. National research has shown as many as 1 in 10 older Americans are abused or neglected each year, and for every case known to programs and agencies, 24 were unknown. In a society that values the just treatment of all people, Elder Abuse Awareness Month reminds us that elder abuse has implications for all of us, and so it's important to find the right solutions to it. Therefore, it is critical that we continue to raise awareness and take steps to prevent it in our communities, educating the public on the issue and what to do when they suspect abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation of an older adult or individuals with disabilities. The APS program will remain focused on raising awareness of elder abuse. On behalf of our program, I would like to thank all of our first responders and all our judicial partners for their continued support in helping APS carry out their mission, which is to protect older adults and people with disabilities. It is through this collaboration that we are forming public and private partnerships to identify where stronger supports are needed and where existing connections must be reinforced as an essential first step toward defending our community against elder abuse. To report abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation, call our hotline 1-800-252-5400 or use our Texas Abuse Hotline. Thank you for your service and for your leadership in helping us work together addressing the underreported issue of elder abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. And Madam Mayor, the president of their nonprofit board, Silver Ribbon Community Partners, is also here. Mr. David? Would you like to share a few words?
Sure, I just actually just stepped in.
Yeah, I saw you come in.
But thank you so much for all the support that you've lent in Silver Ribbon over the years. I know you were the president at one time, did a great job, helped promote the awareness of elder abuse in our community. I just want to say thank you because without your support, we would have elderly people living in our areas who last years of their life, you know, they're in desperate need of assistance. And perhaps we don't always see it, but they're there, and we thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being their voice.
Director Dee? She's always working on everything there. She's the one that does the hard work.
Let me just share with you, like, in fact, before I came, we had, well, I saw an elderly woman digging through our trash bin last week, and I asked her, like, what are you looking for? And she says, well, I always see what they throw, and we had thrown, I think, some dried-up wipes, right? And so she's trying in there to get them, and I told her, if you ever need anything, we're here services for the elderly. We help with rental assistance, utility, medical supplies. We have two resource rooms. And thank you to the city of Mission who provides the CDBD funding. And so she told me about an elderly man that was homeless, and so right before we came, they were in our lobby, and he's been homeless. His left leg was amputated, and he's been denied social security because he doesn't have a residence to receive his check, and so that was an APS case. And so we're taking care of it, but without the support from the community, you know, we don't have these additional resources or the partnership that we have with APS. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you so much. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. The next item is a proclamation for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
Mayor, council, with us today, we have Mr. Henry Rodriguez and the Calaveras MC of Texas. They're all here to accept the proclamation, and of course, Chief Torres here, because, you know, with our, we have some motorcycle patrolmen that also are out in the streets in the city of Mission. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation. Whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. Whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Motorcycle Safety Foundation have named May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas states and motorcycle organizations across the country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorcycle awareness and safety, sharing the road with motorcycles, and remind riders to make themselves more visible to others. Whereas the city of Mission wishes to promote the safety campaign of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in their effort to ensure the safety and well-being of all. Whereas all highway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways throughout the city of Mission, Hidalgo County, and the Calaveras MC of Texas with all others on the roadways. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and urge all motor vehicle operators to join in this effort to keep our highways safe. Proclaimed on this the 22nd day of May 2023.
Aye, so move.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Calaveras Motorcycle Club and our Nationals, to extend a big thank to the city of Mission and the Mission City Council for this proclamation. We are a huge organization. We're not just here in Mission. We're all over the valley. We're throughout the state of Texas, Washington, Oklahoma, Florida, Chicago, Mexico. We're in Matamoros, Reynosa, Rio Bravo, Nuevo León, Yucatan, Zacatecas, and we do promote safety awareness. We do promote riding safe in the roads, and that is part of our job, and that's what we do. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else?
Unless you wanted me to say something, and then bring the next one.
I think we can have, is Rick here?
Yes, he's here.
Rick? We're not going to have the formal presentation of Kayla Garza, but Rick, if you could come up, here you are, and just kind of brief us on all the great things that Kayla's been doing, and then next time we'll have her come.
Absolutely. I was beyond excited this morning to share with you an honor bestowed upon Kayla. Garza, our Research Development Manager at the National Conference, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America in Orlando. Kayla was awarded the Professional Association National Youth Development Professional of the Year. This is an honor that is bestowed to one of 66,000 employees throughout the United States of Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and now we have, there's some units in Canada as well. It's only the second time that it's happened to any Rio Grande Valley club since the inception of the Professional Association, so it is something huge. It's something that we work for, and, you know, technically, we don't work for this. We work for our kids, and we try to give them the best opportunity available, and Kayla's a shining example. She's been with us for 10 years, and this is an honor that's fully, fully, I lost the word, fully, she deserves this. This is something that all our staffs deserve, that everybody that's ever been a part of the Boys and Girls Clubs deserve. I know we have just about everybody in here has been touched by a Boys and Girls Club at some point in their lives, and we are just extremely excited to have this honor, and we hope to continue to honor our city the way that we should, and to honor our kids, and give them the opportunities that they deserve. and give them the opportunities that they deserve. So hopefully, you know, next time, we can bring up her to give her the proper recognition.
Yes, we sure will.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
And we're so very proud of Kayla and all she's done. She's an amazing young lady.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
And she touches all those kids' hearts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is the April 2023 Employee of the Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to present to you our Employee of the Month for April of 2023. We have two employees for April, which are Yvette Villarreal, Code Enforcement Clerk, and Rose Amber Ramirez, Police Officer. They were nominated by Ms. Ira Sema Dimas, our Code Enforcement Supervisor, and I'd like to ask them, along with their supervisors, to please come up to the front. And the nomination reads as follows. On April 18th, Officer Ramirez and Mrs. Villarreal provided exceptional customer service to an elderly gentleman that walked from municipal court to City Hall to discuss a code enforcement case. The gentleman was completely exhausted by the time he reached City Hall. Officer Ramirez asked the gentleman to take a seat and went to get a wheelchair. He then took the gentleman to code enforcement. Mrs. Villarreal then assisted the gentleman with his question and followed up with notifying Municipal Court on the case. Officer Ramirez and Mrs. Villarreal both escorted the gentleman back to Municipal Court using the wheelchair. Mrs. Villarreal assisted the gentleman in providing Municipal Court with the information needed on the case. They showed compassion and provided the support needed. The gentleman was extremely thankful for their assistance. We thank you both for your dedication to your position, and we appreciate all you do each and every day. Congratulations to you both.
Yeah. Okay, so the next item is a report from our Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Some wonderful things happening at the chamber this week. This Wednesday, we do have our Small Business Resource Seminar. It'll be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We are hosting about 15 entrepreneurs and small business owners. We still have space, so anybody is still interested in coming to learn more about the resources, we've partnered with the Small Business Development, Small Business Administration Office, actually, and then we do have a lot of resource opportunities available. On Thursday, we have the Human Resources Process for anyone interested in learning about this educational webinar, it will be this Thursday at 10:00. On Thursday, we will also be performing our ribbon cutting with Brand Genius at the C Building. It is happening at 5:00, so we do expect our city council to join us if they're available. And also, this upcoming board meeting, we will, the chairman of the board will be setting the nominating committee, which we will have open nominations for board director positions. As of now, we do have six open board positions. Out of those six, two are ineligible for reelection, so we're excited about this one coming up, but just wanted to put it on everyone's radar, a barter board. And we also added a recruitment piece to our Chamber of Commerce membership club, and these are business cards with an actual QR code of join now, so I'll be sharing these with everybody, and we do encourage all of our board members to have these in their pockets as well, business cards. And of course, our mission is on the back, and our information to follow us. And we've been waiting for our Discover Mission map of the city of Mission, so I actually have it here. So this is, it'll show like the streets and the assets of the city of Mission, which we're really excited, we have them available. I know sometimes our law enforcement officers, they always come and ask for maps, so they're here, and in the back, they have everything about eat, play, and stay in the city of Mission, so I brought these for you guys, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brenda, for all your hard work. Okay, the next item is the departmental reports. Those were in our packages. Are there any questions?
I'm going to present the reports as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. And so, the next item is our citizens' participation. Ms. Anna, has anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Dovaleena, and she'd like to speak on item 38 on the agenda, which was the tabled item on to rescind parking on the grass.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmen and women. I just wanted to say that, you know, I live in this neighborhood that's 78 years old, and, you know, we take pride in our homes, and I was driving just to different neighborhoods, and I started, even down my street, and I started noticing just cars being parked, like, in front of the door, and I just noticed it's just become a trend, and I was just wondering, and then I heard that, I was like, well, don't we have an ordinance for cars parked on the grass in their yards? And then I heard it was going to be rescinded. I was like, you know, I thought I had to speak and just say how I find it to be really detrimental to, you know, our city and the beautification of our city to rescind this ordinance. So I just felt like I had to say something to everyone, and just how I feel, and I take pride in living here in Mission, and I've been here 27 years, and I plan to stay here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. José Soto?
Yes. Si, está bien, nomás su nombre y la dirección. Mi nombre es José Soto. Vivo en las casas de housing, y vengo a ver si usted nos puede ayudar, porque toda la gente que vive ahí somos gente de 60 hasta 90 años. La mayoría de la gente que estamos ahí estamos deshabitados. Yo tengo más de 20 operaciones, y hay un señor Sánchez, que es el asistente del director, porque el director la gente conoce. Yo he tratado cientos de veces de tratar de hablar con él por los problemas que tenemos. No quieren limpiar, por ejemplo, todas las hojas de los árboles que se caen. Hay veces que están los montones haciendo mucho mentira, y voy aquí a la main office, hablo con una señora que se llama Biota, que según ella es la cargada de los apartamentos, pero lo más de boca, porque hablo con ella y me dice, yo, perdón, yo no puedo hacer nada. Tiene que hablar con el señor Sánchez. Hablo con el señor Sánchez, y ese señor, es como si hablara a una piedra, porque él no hace nada. Él dio una orden, había una señora de ahí que pasaba, se llamaba Reina, era la secretaria de mantenimiento, después le dijeron el nombre de director de mantenimiento, y dije, señora, mire cómo está todo aquí rodeado, todos viviendo en un basurero, y nadie hace nada. Y me dijo, es que el señor Sánchez dio una orden. Digo, ¿qué orden? Que ustedes, todos los gente que viene aquí, tienen que recoger las hojas, tienen que meterlas en una bolsa de plástico, y cada 15 días va a mandar alguien que la recoja. Oye, la mayoría de los que viven ahí, no podemos agacharlos, no podemos hacer nada, gente que traen las sillas de ruedas, otro walker, ¿cómo vamos a andar juntando hojas? Yo nunca había visto eso. Tengo 10 años de vivir ahí, y nunca, nunca se había visto que dijeran, que yo tengo que juntar todas las hojas y echarlas en una bolsa de plástico para que ellos vengan a levantarlas. Hace más o menos, hace más o menos un mes, reporté un litro del agua que se estaba tirando, hay un día vivo, un mes, y cada cuatro días, cada cuatro días vengo al main office y digo, oye, el agua se está tirando, hay mucha agua tirada, perdón, hay mucha agua, se van haciendo muchos sacudos. Fui a hablar con el señor Sánchez hace como unos cuatro días. Digo, también señor, te voy a mandar alguien que limpie y yo que, a ver qué hace. Después de un mes de estarse tirando esa agua, apenas el viernes, mandaron una compañía para que vinieran a arreglarla. Todavía no la arreglan, todavía la han arreglado porque tengo mucho problema. Yo quisiera que alguien nos ayudara, porque yo hablé para todas partes, hasta para San Antonio, hablé a San Antonio, y nadie nos ha podido ayudar, nadie. Y entonces, este señor Padilla, creo que es el director, me dijo la señora Biota, para hablar con el señor Padilla necesito una cita. Digo, bueno, pues déme la cita. Digo, yo no se la puedo dar. Digo, pues usted no encargada de. Digo, mire, vamos con la persona que está ahí enfrente, que ella le hace la cita.
Compromiso, sir.
Vamos con la persona que está enfrente.
Sir, compromiso, ya terminado sus tres minutos para hablar.
Sí, es que, sí, dejamos tres minutos para.
Bueno, sí, así es.
Pero ya sabemos la situación, y podemos, JP, puedes hablar con él.
Gracias. Que tengan una buena tarde.
Gracias a usted.
I have his number and his address. You do? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Okay. Is there anyone else that has signed up?
No.
Okay, there being, no one else that's signed up for citizens' participation? We're going to move on to public hearing.
Excuse me, the citizens' participation, like she came with item 38, someone just wanted to address that. We don't have a statement to the item before you speak.
Item number 38 is.
It's that it's, that's not a public hearing, so that's why she asked to speak. She called in to speak.
The first one came in to speak about that. Is it possible to speak real quickly on that?
It's up to the council to amend that rule to allow them to come speak if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Most of the time I'm out of town, my days due to the one state, so I took time off specifically for this, and I appreciate you letting me speak. The reason I'm speaking on that item 38 is because we all believe that this had already been settled, and we're moving forward, going forward, like many other cities have. Beautifying the city is everyone's, I think, responsibility, especially all of you who are up here. And there are some of us who live in older neighborhoods. We don't live in nice gated subdivisions where there's HOAs that tell you, you can't have weeds growing on the lawn, you can't put your grill in the front of the house. We live in older neighborhoods. There are three generations living in some households that have four, five cars. There's plenty of places to park your car, the street and the driveway. We all know that. However, some of our neighbors have all of their cars in the front yard. It doesn't look nice. Go through Realtor.com, look for a home. What does it say? Nice home, nice schools, nice driveway, or nice two-car garage? Not one ad will say. Look at the front. Five cars can be parked. Come buy this house because you can park your car in the front yard. That's not attractive. It's not appealing. It's not a selling point. If anybody wants to buy a home, the first thing they want to do is they want to go see the neighborhood. I think all of you will agree. You want to see what the area looks like. It's not attractive to have a parking lot in front of the house. When it rains, that becomes muddy. It's dirt flying in the air. So my thing is, you know, maybe people are not speaking up on it because they become complacent. People say, well, that's the way it's always been. But all of you here are to move the city forward, to teach. You know, some of their parents aren't teaching their kids who have the brand-new sports car that doesn't want to park it in the street. They want to park it up in the front, right through the grass. So I hope that you guys use this as a teaching moment. I know you maybe got some, you know, slack, or, I'm sorry, some comments from people saying, you know, your constituents saying, hey, you know, we can't afford a driveway, but yet they can afford four cars. They can afford insurance for four cars. And another thing is, there are homes that don't have driveways at all, but you know, most of those homes have one car. And the ones that have a driveway, they've got five cars, and they're not parking them in the driveway, because the carport is full of junk. So you're not going to cause a hardship on these people. You're actually going to teach them how to be clean, how to keep the neighborhood clean, how to make property values, you know, you know, maybe, maybe they will increase if people move in there and buy property and build new homes, and that's what's happened. First Street Park was a dumping ground when I moved here. There were tires, there was toilets.
Your time's up.
But it got cleaned up because citizens participated. I came here, I said, clean it up, and you guys did, and I thank you. I'm not here to complain, I'm here for constructive criticism.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Anna, that's signed up? Ms. Esther, did you want to come up?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, 709 Opale, Mission, Texas. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, and citizens. Yeah, I'm concerned about this too, because we have across the street from my Opale house, there are some people who continuously park the pickup when they have parking in the back. They have a lot of area in the back. They have tractors in the back, they have equipment, and then you go to the other house, the right side, and they build illegally without permits, and not only do they have two cars, they put four cars, and they put eight cars, including a trailer, and then across next to my house, they have trailers with welding equipment, and I was, gentlemen, ¿qué están haciendo? Ay, es que tenemos un negocio. I'm going, I'm glad you're working, but you just can't park wherever you want, and they're like looking at me like, don't tell us what to do. First of all, they didn't get appropriate permits. Across the street, she didn't get appropriate permits. So they're mad at me because I get permits, and I'm telling them, you destroyed the grass, it's mud now. But qué es lo atrás? It's getting out of control. There were some residents, also in Opale, in front of their house, before the street, now they're putting their own driveways. We called in, do they have a permit? What? No, they didn't get a permit. So all these people think they can get all these permits and get away with it, and lower the value of our homes, and it's wrong. I don't want to go to your house, sir, or your house, or your house, or in front of Nora's house, Mayor Nora, excuse me, and just park my vehicle. It's wrong, it makes us look bad. And I know a lot of these people can't, I don't want to, because I'm lazy. Well, I'm sorry, it doesn't look good, you already made a mud pile. And then my grandson with a wheelchair, what do you do for your citizens who are physically challenged? Now put them in the street. When these eight people park over here, and I have the pictures of their trailers, they're obstructing and blocking. So we're going south to north, you can't even see the stop sign because of all their equipment. So they're going to cause us to have an accident because, don't tell them what to do. But anyway, I do thank you, and I do know that your job is one with a lot of pressure, but we on the south side need to increase the value of our properties. We don't want to be ghetto or a slum. Even in HEB, across the street from HEB, all those duplexes, they're parking their vehicles, half in the street and half on the sidewalk. So if you're going to exercise or walk your dogs, but anyway, thank you. Both know.
Thank you. All right. So that concludes our citizens' participation. We're going to move on to the public hearing. First item is a rezoning request.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Item number nine is a rezoning for Lot 36 Freeway Subdivision, Unit Number Four. This is from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Duplex/Foreplex. The applicant is Rogelio Castillo. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Western Street and Alma Avenue. Surrounding zones include Single Family Residential to all directions. The existing land uses are Single Family Residential to all directions. The site is currently vacant. The future land. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Approving an R-2 zone in this location would be detrimental to the surrounding single-family residential. Staff did receive a letter in opposition to their request. The concerns voiced in that letter are regarding safety and increased traffic. PNZ and staff recommended denial. However, we did receive, the day of the PNZ meeting, a petition reflecting twenty-eight percent in favor of the request for this item. And also today, we actually got another petition, but in opposition, reflecting eight percent. So the PNZ and staff recommended denial. If the council is inclined to override this decision, a four-fifth vote would be required. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please state your name and address.
Diana Ramirez. Diana Ramirez.
Okay.
And I didn't quite hear everything. Did they approve or did they get the ones?
Well, we haven't had a discussion. This is a public hearing, so this is your opportunity to either tell us that you're in favor or you're against.
Well, we're not in favor because it's in the corner of Alma and Western, and we get the traffic from the subdivision, the one-mile line. They all go to the frontage real fast, and then the one from Los Ebanos come to the Alma. And that corner of the lot is very tight and it's very small. It's probably like a fifty by maybe fifty, sixty, eighty, or I don't know the length. But there's, we have elderly people that live there, and some have dementia, and they walk around there, and you can't even really walk if the cars are parked on the side of the, of the lot. So that gives us safety concerns. So that's why we're not approved of that. Because they want to make it into a four, two, I think it was duplex to four duplex apartments. And that's going to bring more cars, like she was saying, this strike on the stop sign, you can barely see it, it's in the corner, and it's a dead end as you come in. So that's not going to help the people and the people that come on the Ebanos to Alma because they can't see the stop sign because there'll be parking. There's no room for the cars to park if it's a fourplex. So that's why we're not agreeing on that. And we've been, my mom's ninety-three, and I have another one with dementia, and she's dementia, and, you know, a lot of young kids, children that walk around and play. So we don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I mean, what was your address?
Three eleven, three eleven.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
There's someone on Zoom there.
On Zoom, okay.
Hello?
There we go, there we go.
Hello, please state your name.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Virginia Alanis Cardenas, three eleven Alma Avenue, Mission, Texas. I've spent several years at the Citizen Advisory Voice for La Cuchilla, and just last Wednesday, we voiced our concerns in the public hearing with a plan in zoning. And they did deny the rezoning from a single-family residence to a fourplex housing on Lot thirty-six. But we were informed that today the decision was going to be made. Our main concern, as you heard before, is that Lot thirty-six right, right now is a single-family lot at the corner of Alma Avenue and Western Street. The new owner of that lot is asking Mission to rezone the lot to a fourplex housing. There's over two hundred and fifty single-family homes right there, and in the middle, he wants to put in a fourplex. The concern, the safety, that you've heard tonight, is that the lot cannot hold the fourplex housing, parking for six to eight cars, the common ground that is used for those, for those plexes for families and children. The cars would have to street park, which will be an issue with the city ordinance. And there is also a stop sign, as you heard, on the corner of Lot thirty-six, Alma and Western. That's a big problem because there's not a clear view, there's an obstruction of oncoming cars due to the street parking on Western and Alma. Alma Avenue is a road that the families from Berta, Carolina, Donna, and Irma use to enter the frontage to the expressway to go to worker's school. So it's a very, very busy stop sign. The Alma Street people that are coming in from mile one south also use Alma Avenue as a direct shot to get to the frontage road. Los Ebanos Road is a school zone that is heavy with traffic, of course, during drop-off and pickup and buses. And they also swing around all the way to Western Street to free up the school traffic on Los Ebanos. So you're going to see a lot of parked cars waiting for their turn to pick up their children, parked there on Western. So if they're parked there and you're trying to turn right, and we've seen that with utility trucks, trash, school buses, Mission and Idea, you're turning right there on Alma with the parked cars there, you don't have a clear view. And you're actually turning into the left lane instead of the right lane because of the parked cars. The, the, the biggest concern I have is that that lot will not hold the cars that are going to be needed for those four plexes, and they're going to have to use the street. I ask for the members to please review the map and see where our concerns are coming from. Please deny or disapprove the reclassification of the property from its present single-family residence to fourplex. The safety and the welfare of La Cuchilla neighborhood is at stake as we know it, La Cuchilla. I thank you for your time and your service, and we vote for denying the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardenas. Is there anyone else?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item. Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to deny the request.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the rezoning request from R-1 to R-2. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number ten is a rezoning for lots forty-seven through fifty-four out of block two, Madero. This is from agricultural AOI to R-2 duplex fourplex. The applicant is Ruben Sanchez. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet south of Main Street along the west side of Betty Street. Surrounding zones include to all directions agricultural open interim, existing land uses or single-family residential to all directions. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Approving an R-2 zone in this location would be detrimental to the surrounding single-family residential properties. On May fifth, twenty twenty-three, staff received a petition against the request reflecting thirty-eight percent in opposition. The concerns voiced in this petition are the following: property tax increase, cost financial strain, flooding, no proper drainage nor gutters for water to drain, and additional traffic. PNZ and staff recommended denial. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please come forward and please state your name and address.
My name is Gilbert Garcia, and I'm from Edinburgh, but I am, I helped the landowner apply for the rezoning. He needed a little assistance, and I went ahead and signed as agent for him and helped him do this. And I just, I'm just here to answer any questions that anybody might have. I might not have all the answers because it is not my property, so I'm just here to help.
Okay.
As necessary.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No? Okay, is there a motion to?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Do we have any questions for staff or?
I'm going to deny the request.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the request as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number eleven is a rezoning for three different tracks. Track number one is the north, seven point nineteen acres of Lot thirty-nine, Bellwoods Company subdivision C. Track number two, a ten-acre track of land out of Lot forty, Bellwoods Company subdivision C. And track number three, an eight-point forty-five acre track of land out of Lot forty-one and Bellwoods Company subdivision C. This is from AOI agricultural open interim to R-2 duplex fourplex. The applicant is DS Three Development LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy-five feet north of West Mall Two Road on the west side of Compton Drive. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north, east, west is agricultural and duplex fourplex, as well as the south, the existing land uses. The north is vacant, the east is vacant, and there's a single-family residential. To the west is vacant acreage and apartments. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map. However, it complies with a fairly new existing land uses. Staff note that the city has approved two rezonings for duplex fourplex off of Trosper Road. If approved, the applicant is proposing to develop a private subdivision that would have an entrance from Trosper Road only, similar to what's currently being developed in the area. There would be no entrance through Compton Road. PNZ and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Peña Salinas, and I own three acres right across this rezoning. My main thing was that I wanted to make sure that nothing, no traffic went through the Compton Drive, and she said, no traffic. Also, Stanley wasn't able to be here, but we do have pay irrigation rights, and we just need to know as long as the irrigation road isn't closed for us who do need the water. And number three, that there would be, since the private drive, there's going to be a fence behind the duplexes. And then because I'm so involved with the community as much as the city of Mission, and I know that there's a purpose with the Texas citrus, and it's by promoting the annual celebration displays, exhibits, and other educational matters in connection with the growing and marketing of citrus fruits. Mission was the home of ruby red grapefruit, and they own beautiful acres. I just hope that somebody in the board or one of the departments can collaborate with them, maybe leave rows, and I know it's a property of citrus. I did go to Edinburgh, and they said every eleven citrus trees on an acre will lower the taxes. I just believe that we cannot be destroying all the citrus because then might as well destroy the Texas citrus, grapefruit of Mission, Texas. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? And just if you would, state your name and address, please.
Hi, good afternoon, council. My name is Dina Salinas Valdez. This is my son, Diego Valdez. I am the owner of that property there. My children and I have acquired it to do future business, like Miss Peña Salinas said. Everything that is needed to conduct business there is going to be adhered to. There's not going to be any entrance or exit coming out of Compton. That property is currently agriculture. I have no citrus there. I am the only residence that lives in that area. I own the majority of the property there, and I'm looking to build a future for my children. We are both real estate agents currently, and I'm hoping that my son here starts something positive. I'm here to answer any questions, my son too, if there's any.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we're just in the public hearing, so we really can't ask you any questions at this point, but if something comes up, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? And no one is on Zoom?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's, there's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Are there any questions?
Council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately four hundred feet east of Santa Engracia along the south side of San Román. The applicant wishes to reapply for a home occupation. COP originally approved February twenty fifteen for a licensed childcare at this location. The home has a two-car driveway off of San Román capable of accommodating the safe drop-off and pickup of children. There's a six-foot opaque buffer fencing surrounding the rear of the residence to maximize protection for the children. Ms. Argüés has primarily used her living room to care for the children. The last conditional use permit for this location was approved on July twenty-four, twenty nineteen, for a period of three years. Hours of operation are Monday to Friday from eight to four. Her staff is only her daughter and herself. She has an active business license and a DHS certification. PNZ and staff are recommending approval for life of use, subject to compliance with all city codes, continue to be DHS certified, and must continue to comply with all home occupation portions of the zoning code. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Are there any questions for staff? Did I hear correctly, this is for life of use?
We're recommending, she, she already had it due to COVID, she closed it, so she's trying to reopen it, and we haven't had a, any issue since she opened it back in twenty fifteen.
Okay. All righty.
Move for approval, mayor? Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the life of use as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that would be ordinance five three one three. Next item.
Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit. This is for a drive-through service window for Taco Bell. This would be located at four oh eight West Griffin Parkway. This is out of a two-point forty-eight acre track of land out of Lot twenty-five dash five, West Division to Sherona. The property is currently zoned C-three general business. The applicant is Valley Bell Enterprises in Care of Ace Engineering LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately nine hundred and seventy feet east of Holland Road along the north side of West Griffin Parkway. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-thousand five-hundred-and-twenty square-foot building with a drive-through service window. Access to the site will be via thirty-foot driveway off of Griffin Parkway and a twenty-eight-foot shared access easement that will connect with the adjacent businesses on both sides. Proposed hours of operation are Monday to Sunday from nine AM to two AM. Staff, they will have twenty to twenty-five full and part-time employees. They, they are proposing fifty-four seating spaces, which will require eighteen parking spaces. The applicant is proposing twenty-three parking spaces and twelve on the drive-through lane for a total of thirty-five parking spaces. Staff may allow twenty-eight notices to property owners within two-hundred-foot radius. Staff has not received any comments in favor or against. The applicant has requested that section one point fifty-four four of the zoning code, which states that if a, if a conditional use permit has not been used within one year of the date of its granted, the permit is automatically canceled, be waived. The reason for their request is that they're in the process of purchasing the land, and they want to make sure that the permit is going to be granted and start, and start building at the end of twenty twenty-five, which the lease is up for the current building. PNZ and staff. PNZ and staff recommended approval for life of use, subject to compliance with all city codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, acquired business license prior to business occupancy, and waiving section one point fifty-four-four of the zoning code as long as construction commence before December twenty twenty-five. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Thank you, and please state your name and address.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Mike Stansbury. My address is one zero one East Cherokee Street in Jacksonville, Texas. I'm with Valley Bell Enterprises. We are a Taco Bell franchisee. We currently operate, own and operate one hundred and thirteen locations in Texas. We've got all the locations in the Rio Grande Valley, from Rio Grande City to McAllen, Harlingen, and then we've also got the two here in Mission, the one currently, it's the Taco Bell Long John Silver's at one oh seven West Griffin Parkway, and then we've got the one that we just opened at the end of last year right off of Sherry Road. We've operated here in the valley and absolutely love it. We love the community. We've been here for twenty years. That Taco Bell Long John Silver's opened back in two thousand and five. It was one of the first projects that I worked on, and it is a twenty-year lease. It's also a twenty-year franchise agreement. Our company prefers to own the real estate versus lease the real estate, so we're proposing to purchase the two point four-five acres just about a quarter mile to the west and then construct a Taco Bell. I was here to explain, she did a great job of explaining why we're requesting the approvals that we're requesting. The lease expires in October of twenty twenty-five. We'll likely start construction that summer. In a perfect world, the Taco Bell Long John Silver's would be open one day, and then the new Taco Bell right down the street would be open the next day. If we can do all of our planning and everything goes according to plan, which sometimes in construction, it's not a perfect world, but that's what we would like to do. One other question is, will it be a combination unit with a Taco Bell Long Johns? And it will not. It'll just be a Taco Bell only. But that's why we're here tonight, really, three approvals. We're currently under contract to purchase the property, so we want to make sure that we get the conditional use permit approved so that we know that we can use the land. We don't want to buy the land and then find out that we can't use the land. So that's the first approval, the conditional use permit. And then the second approval that we're requesting is the lifetime exemption for use as a Taco Bell. And then third is to extend the amount of time for us to use that building permit to December of twenty twenty-five, is what we agreed on in PNZ. So I'm here to answer any questions. I know we can't answer any right now, but I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. And congratulations. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor and opposition? Anyone online?
Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item. Is there a motion or any questions?
The property is currently zoned C3 general business, and the applicant is Richard Gomez. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Sixth Street and Sherry Road. The applicant leases suite with any commercial plaza for his proposed bar. The applicant is not proposing to offer any food in his menu. Access to the site will be provided off of E6 Street through an existing twenty-four foot driveway. A bar is allowed under a C3 general business zone as long as they apply for a conditional use permit, and they require city council's approval. The proposed days and hours of operation would be Wednesday to Friday from six to twelve AM, and Saturday from four PM to twelve AM. They're proposing to have three employees. For parking, there's a total of sixty-six seating spaces, which require twenty-two parking spaces. It is noted that the parking areas held in common, the entire plaza has a total of fifty-eight parking spaces. Staff notes that the floor plan shows a bar component. Section one point fifty-six dash three states that bars, cocktail, lunches, taverns, cantinas, saloons, dance hall, discotheques, discos, or nightclubs must be at least three hundred feet from the nearest residence, church school, or publicly owned property. Staff note that there is a residential subdivision within three hundred feet radius. However, PNZ and council have waived this separation requirement in previous CUPs, but only for restaurants. Staff's recommendation is for denial. Staff feels that due to the complexity of the parking, this bar proposal would be detrimental to the plaza. Staff also considers that if this business succeeds, there would not be enough parking, considering that all the suites are rented out. Staff's recommendation was for denial, however, PNZ recommended approval, and their recommendation was approval for one year to assess the operation. They were willing to reduce the number of seating spaces, and they would be complying with all city codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, and the acquisition of a business license prior to business occupancy. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please state your name and address.
My name is Herman Sledge, six hundred North Sherry, Suite C. I know we spoke on the tent that we were a hundred percent in agreement with the reduction of thirteen, up to thirteen seats inside the establishment to take into account for the limited parking. We actually dropped it from sixty down to forty-seven. I didn't submit the updated drawing. I apologize. I'm terrible with computers and drawing on computers, like a child with a crayon, so I know they're terrible. But that was one thing that we had discussed, and that was definitely something that we took into account. We've already dropped the seating to make good with that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Go ahead. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Is anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing. Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented with the reduced seating. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. And that's for one year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Ordinance fifty-three fifteen.
Fifty-three fifteen. Thank you, Anna.
Good luck.
Okay. Next item is the conditional use permit renewal.
Item number fifteen is a conditional use permit renewal. This is for the drive-through service window for Tortilla Carmelita. This is also located at six hundred North Sherry Road, Suite F. This would be lot one, Esas Vegas subdivision. It's currently zoned C3 general business, and the applicant is Luz del Carmen Rivera. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of East Sixth Street and Sherry Road. The applicant has been in operation at this location since twenty sixteen. The last CUP approved by PNZ for this location was on April twenty-two, twenty twenty, for a period of three years. The applicant is seeking to renew the conditional use permit for the drive-through service window and would like the board to consider approving for life of use. Access to the site is off of E6 Street through an existing twenty-four foot driveway. Customers either park within the shared parking area to walk in, purchase the item, or use the drive-through service window. Staff notes that this would be their third renewal. Days and hours of operation are Monday to Saturday from seven AM to nine PM, and Sunday from seven AM to seven PM. They currently have four employees. Parking, there's a total of fifty-eight parking spaces that are shared in common. PNZ and staff recommended approval for life of use, subject to compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here? If you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Luz Rivera. I'm the owner. My address, twenty-nine eleven Sycamore Avenue, Mission, Texas. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Is there a motion? Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd go ahead and approve life of use for this restaurant. And if anyone has not had their baracoa and corn tortillas, you need to go. They are the best in town.
Second.
Can we vote for, we still, we didn't do the voting on the closing of the, it's okay? You got excited when you went.
White and corn, like I can't make up my mind, they're both so good.
So, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, now?
Now I make a motion to approve a life of use for this restaurant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for a life of use. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Fifty-three sixteen.
Fifty-three sixteen. Next item.
Item number sixteen is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Cien Por Ciento Antojitos Mexicanos, located at twenty-three oh six East Expressway eighty-three, Suites one and two. This is out of lot one, Simmeron Crossing Phase one subdivision. The property is currently zoned C3 general business, and the applicant is Cien Por Ciento Antojitos Mexicanos. If the council inclines to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of JR Drive and Expressway eighty-three along the Frontage Road. The restaurant, the drive-through service window is located at the east end of the plaza. The restaurant has been in operation since twenty twelve. On May eighth, twenty seventeen, they were granted a CUP for life of use for the drive-through service window. The last CUP for the sale and onsite consumption was approved by PNZ on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, for a period of two years. The applicant is seeking to renew the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol. Staff notes that this would be their fourth renewal. The hours of operation are Sunday to Thursday from ten-thirty AM to ten PM, Friday and Saturday from ten AM to eleven PM. Alcoholic beverages are only sold during allowable state selling hours. Staff, they have eight to ten employees in different shifts. Parking, there's a total of a hundred and twenty-two total seating spaces, which require forty-one parking spaces. There's a total of a hundred and five existing parking spaces that are shared in common. PNZ and staff recommended approval for life of use, subject to compliance with all city codes, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
Mayor, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and approve the life of use for this item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the life of use of consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Ordinance fifty-three seventeen.
Fifty, ordinance fifty-three seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number seventeen is a conditional use permit for the mother's retirement home/guest house on property zone R1, single-family residential. This is at nineteen eleven Adams, being two acres, two-point-six acres of land, more or less, out of lot twenty-three dash one West Addition to Sherlin. The property is currently zoned R1. The applicant, Jose J. Villegas. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately two hundred feet south of West Twentieth Street along the west side of Adams Avenue. Their request before the board is to allow the construction of a mother's retirement home or guest home. The proposed structure will have nine hundred and fifty-three square feet. It will consist of two bedrooms with walk-in closets, one bathroom, and a gay room, utility room, and a porch. Guest homes are allowed under the R1 code as long as they apply for a conditional use permit, and they comply with the following conditions. The lot needs to be a minimum of twelve thousand square feet. It cannot be made available or used for lease, rent, hire, and the owner of such use may not receive remuneration for the use of one of the above. Proposed must be secondary to the primary residence. They shall have no access to public street, shall have separate kitchen, area, or utilities. The lot measures a total of eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet. Staff notes that this is an unsubdivided tract of land and might trigger a single lot variance requirement prior to any construction, any new construction, depending on the history of the acreage. All building setbacks are being met. The driveway is more than sufficient to accommodate any guests. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to the structure may not have a separate kitchen or separate utility or electrical connections, transferable to other future owners imposing same conditions, not to be used for rental purposes, and if required a single lot variance, if property does not pre-exist nineteen seventy-four. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Please state your name and address.
Jose Villegas. Address is thirteen zero five West Combs, Alton, Texas, seven eight five seven three. I'm J. Villegas, and of course, my mom, Belinda Villegas. So the intention of this, of course, is, you know, this is my mom's dream home, and my sister lives on the street. She's a teacher in Mission. We have multiple businesses in Mission as well. The intention is here to, under one condition, that I'm fortunate enough that she lives near her home, with that being, of course, if she can retire there, of course, so I can raise my family there, and of course, my sister lives down the street, so them being real close to us makes the retirement for her pretty joyful. So she has a half-life with her, so that's the point of this, and any questions?
Are you sure you want to live there? I'm curious.
Grandkid.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this request? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Fifty-three eighteen.
Five zero, and that's fifty-three eighteen.
Mayor, can I just ask a question regarding the single lot variance? If property does not pre-exist nineteen, what does that mean?
Since it's acreage, it's not platted, the land is not platted. The only way they can construct without having to subdivide would be either by doing a single lot variance. Now, if the property pre-exists seventy-four, they can get the permit.
And do we know that at this point?
Actually, it does not pre-exist seventy-four. The land was subdivided in seventy-nine, so they would just need to apply for single lot variance.
Okay, and so they're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is a tabled item.
Yes. I need a motion to remove it from the table.
I'm going to move the item from the table.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove the item number eighteen, which is a conditional use permit for a drive-through window service at thirty-one twenty-four North Mayberry Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number eighteen is a conditional use permit for drive-through service window for Snowball Express number two. This is out of a tract of land out of the northwest, one acre of the west, five point eighteen acres of the north, eleven point three acres of lot twenty-eight dash nine West Addition to Sherlin. This is a C2 neighborhood commercially zone. The applicant is Elgin Xavier. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Mayberry Road and East Mall Two Road. The applicant has a fourteen hundred square foot building for his snack shop and is requesting a conditional use permit for the use of the four drive-through service windows at this location. The building has two windows on each side to place the order and to pick and for delivery. Entry to the site is deprived from a driveway cut along Mayberry Road. The drive-through allows for stacking up to approximately nine vehicles. Days and hours of operation proposed is every day from eleven AM to one-thirty AM. He proposes four employees. For parking, there's a total of thirty-four seating spaces in the patio area, which require eleven parking spaces. spaces. Currently, there's a total of twenty striped parking spaces and the drive-through lane allows for stacking of nine vehicles for a total of twenty-nine parking spaces. Staff notes that this business has been in operation since 2017. Staff has received several concerns regarding the hours of operation staying open until two a.m., customers using the drive-through window with idle waiting for their orders with loud exhaust mufflers and loud music playing from their vehicles. Staff supports these local businesses and would like the applicant to continue his use of the drive-through service windows. However, staff also recommends keeping the hours of the drive-through window until ten p.m. on weekdays and until midnight on weekends. The long-established residential community directly south and residential lots just east of the business is being impacted by the noise being created by the late-hour traffic. The city has a noise ordinance and an obligation to protect their citizens who have been there long before the business. Staff has suggested for them to hire off-duty police officers to address the noise and traffic concerns, but suggestions have been ignored. Staff notes that the applicant had applied for a conditional use permit back in 2019 and it was denied due to non-compliance. Staff mailed out seventy notices to property owners within two-hundred-foot radius and staff has not received any comments in favor of their request. Staff recommends denial of the extended hours past ten p.m. Staff is also requesting that the fence, potholes be repaired within thirty days to be in compliance with all city code. PNC was inclined to approve their request, subject to following the six-month reevaluation in order to assess compliance. They must comply with all city codes and they must hire off-duty police officers to help address the noise concerns. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
I'm also going to help Mr. Xavier. I represent, but I guess he wanted to address the city council. I've got the council permission.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elgin Xavier. I'm the owner of Snowball Express. I've been operating Snowball Express in McAllen, Mission, Edinburg, Farr, Weslaco. I've been operating for eleven years and I had any complaints regarding anything, all the cities. We operate till one in the morning. There's only one place we can get raspers, snatches, and everything. Only place in the valley, Snowball Express. And many people take pride in coming to my business and like, it's not like a national chain. I'm a small businessman. I wanted to develop and give people the best raspers and snacks, which is a tradition of the valley. Only thing I have heard about the concerns that was not valid. There is no any kind of this, that tract is more than one acre. There's only two neighbors there. Even the Whataburger on four-ninety-five has four neighbors. And I've been operating peacefully and everything is fine. There's no single complaint. So, I request that I should get a drive-through permit for twenty-four hours because one of the things is that I have the same right as any other business in the valley to operate on my hours. And if, like the planning and zoning said, if there is any problem with the noise and so everything, here is the police department. They are here. I'm the taxpayer. I'm paying to the city. It's a tax. It's generating revenue. I'm employing people to this neighborhood. So, I deserve the best to be possible. Even I ask about McAllen and Edinburg, they don't even have a drive-through window permit on those cities. And so, every time I have been applying for it, you all know about other issues. There is absolutely no issue. It started as a problem from, I have another location in Mission on Griffin Parkway. It started as a problem. I already addressed the problem. There needs to be a fence. And I already put up the fence. There's zero problem. Here also, there's no zero problem. So, I deserve to get permit of my drive-through permit twenty-four hours as like any other business existing in this Mission City. That's all. Thank you.
I just want to say something quickly because I learned a long time ago, he who gets mad loses. And I think that Mr. Xavier may be a little bit excited, but I don't represent him exactly on this issue here, but in general, he's a businessman. Came apart, been difficult for him to get where he's at. But the one thing that I don't think he's touched on is that the bulk of his business is between ten and one in the morning. And there's other businesses like his similarly situated. And I get it. We have Whataburgers off of Mayberry. There's neighborhoods closely in that vicinity. I don't know what else he could do. I don't know if somebody has to go out there and actually monitor what's actually happening. I hate to think that he's being targeted by anyone to somehow the other abide or not. Just in him addressing you guys, I could understand that there's some anger on his behalf, but let me ask on his behalf that I think that, I think if we continue to try this over the next six months to a year, allow him to stay open till one o'clock in the morning. If there's any issues, I think there's maybe one neighbor in the area there that might have issues. I think the biggest concern might be maybe the lights late at night. I don't know if he could put up a buffer. I don't know if there's one there already, but maybe he could.
Yeah, I already put up the fence already and use an eight-foot fence.
So, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the actual, but it's been in existence for a long time. If you can tell by the photographs that you were looking at right now that there's a lot invested in it, the paving, the building itself, and he's been there for a long time. So, all I can tell you is that one thing I did notice is that a good portion of his business is between ten and one. So, we'd like to ask you all to allow him to continue to operate between ten and one. It's profitable. The size of that profit, I can't really get into it. He's a stubborn man. He's not going to quit. He likes running his business. Clearly, one would be hard-pressed to wonder how do you make a business profitable when you're selling snow cones, but he's done an excellent job doing that. So, whatever the city council can do, to allow him to continue to operate, even if it's on a let's-watch-and-see basis, we would appreciate that as well. And we don't mind coming back in the next six, seven, eight, nine, ten months to see if you can get that done.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to?
Thanks so much. Like he said, you know, I've been here for business and I wanted to do whatever it takes to get the business done. I even asked for the, under the cities, they said, "Come on up and open your business twenty-four hours. We are here for the business." And the property is one acre. It's fenced. I only have two neighbors. And they asked them. They don't even know what time I close, you know. And if there's anybody against, I can address my concerns. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this request? Is there anyone online? Is there a motion, please?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I have a question from Ms. Deluna. Has all of the concerns in the past been addressed and do they continue or have they stopped?
We have an ongoing case in court that has not been.
And is he aware of it?
Yes.
Is Mr. Salinas aware of it?
Yes.
I represent one. That's the only case that's.
What is the case?
But it's, it's basically an enforcement action on an old, it is a historic case that been pending, in fact, a court of law, but that's a singular event, is what I'm saying. I mean, there's more to this. It needs, you know, I think on a temporary basis. I don't, I didn't see any other reports. I don't really get to see Mission PD out or anything like that. I think that based on, again, I want to say this even though you're my client, based on his approach to certain things, some things, sometimes they would give him a critical. So, this is why I came with him, to make sure that he presented it in a way. And even after I gave him a chance, he still came across a little, you know.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
That's all I wanted to say. Maybe, maybe you had someone to meet to sweep it out if you get it right here. Because again, we're asking that you continue to allow him to operate for one o'clock at least. And we'll come back to six, seven, eight.
So, Suzie, right now is still ten, right?
No, I think he should not be operating.
Yes, he should not be. He shouldn't be operating right now.
He should not.
And he's still operating and has been for the past two years.
That's correct.
After we gave him a non-permit. And we do have residents around the area that have filed complaints.
I'd like to call.
Wait, 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 wait.
I have to call a point of order here. I have a vote on the floor, so.
To close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing. Second. So, there is a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Questions for staff?
Yes, just to clarify. We heard this two years ago, and two years ago, we didn't give him a permit to sell, but he still has been operating without the permit for the past two years. And we still have residents in surrounding areas complaining about the noise.
Well, recently, I have not checked that recently, but I know he has two different locations. And to be honest, the majority of the complaints.
From four-ninety-five.
The one from the four-ninety-five. We had some on this one, but they were minimal.
I'm sorry, ma'am. It's the, they closed the public comment portion of it. Now, if they have questions, it's upon the council if they want to ask questions of the applicant or not.
You're an employee, right, ma'am?
Me?
You work for?
No, no, I need for something else, but I didn't know this was on here.
Uh-huh.
And as constituents and as a citizen of Mission, I work all day and I'm busy all day. And I go there.
Before.
Open late and.
Before, if I could just take a pause, but you can continue to have this conversation if council allows it. I just want to make sure council has an opportunity to extend the invitation to the public member.
You know, at this point, I'd rather not because we were, but we're, yes. And you're in the middle of a question, Ms. Jessica? Or?
I just wanted to know if the neighbor in the back and on the side, are they still, do they still feel the same way they felt two years ago when they came?
No, no, they did not show up to the planning and zoning nor today.
And did they get the letters?
Yes. Notices were sent out for both hearings.
I'm surprised Ms. Reyna's not here.
Mayor, I have a.
I see one last thing.
Sure.
Again, with your permission.
Yes.
I think you're, you might have said, I think that it's open during hours when she's available in my place. And I think that that's the vast amount of people. This is why the bulk of this business is between ten and one. That's what allows them to keep it open. Clearly, he needs to adhere to whatever the city asks him to. But I think of the time that he was doing this, pressure by the fact that he's got a business to run, not for long. He's got married, but he's now he's got a family. So, it's difficult. It's a good business. He's not selling alcohol or anything like that. It's just snow cones. Snow cones fan on the devil, I guess, a lot. The devil works. Tends to get underneath his skin, I miss you, Tom. That may be the reason why some people may take this hard approach, but I can tell you that in the other case, if you look back, there are no missing complaints. Nobody's complaining. I'm asking each and every one of you here, you know, as you execute your oath, that you do it based on what's good for the general public, not based on any one personal issue and any one personal problem they have. If you got a complaint from one person, whether he be friend or foe, don't act on that. Act on the overall obligation to be right. Here, we have a constitutional obligation to treat them fairly. I think that's what he's trying to tell. And I'm not in any way where you're form insinuating that you have it. And this is why, as a peace offering, based on the fact that he's a little finacious, saying this don't matter, you're seven, eight months from now, let's see how he's doing. I don't anticipate you're going to get any more problems other than the same problem that Taco Bell was here a little oddo. Or anyone else would give you when you have a drive-through and you have vehicles that are going through it. Kids, you know, they yell at eleven in the morning, eleven at night. You got your windows rolled down, you know, let's ignore it. But I think he's made every effort to minimize it. I think it would be very, it would be very severe not for long to operate after ten o'clock when everybody opens.
Mr. Salinas, Mayor, may I ask Mr. Salinas a question?
Sure.
Since he's speaking on behalf of his client?
Yes. This is my only thing. I mean, I get it. I get our Hispanic culture. They love the raspers and I understand it's till one, but also, we did not extend his permit for two years, yet he was still operating. So, if we extend it to one, what's for him to tell us that he's going to close at one and not stay till four or twenty-four hours, the way he's been saying, that that's what he wants?
He can't because he have the little, I mean.
Okay.
I think his requests are not unreasonable because Whataburger takes over twenty-four hours. Not that I don't know. Doctor said I couldn't go to Whataburger anymore, but what I'm saying is I don't think that request is unreasonable. And I don't think that he should be treated differently than a franchise that sells burgers and tacos versus a local down-home community business owner that sells snow cones.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Thank you. I'm going to say a few words and then we'll get some more comments, but I, first of all, I want to make it really, really clear that we are not treating this applicant any differently than we would treat any other franchise or any business owner. That's, that's a number one thing that I want to make it very, very clear. The other point that I do want to make is that the past two years, he has been operating without a conditional use permit. That is a concern for me and obviously Ms. Jessica. So, I would be okay with allowing him to open until ten o'clock and letting him prove to us that he will adhere to rules because the past few years, he's not. And the other, the difference between that location and a four-ninety-five location is just that. This is Two Mile Line and Mayberry, and it's not four-ninety-five and Conway. That's the big difference. And that's my opinion. So, at this point, I'll let my colleagues make comments as well.
I just wanted to, if I couldn't respond.
No, thank you, Rick.
Well, I don't agree with the comments, ma'am.
Rick, Rick, Rick.
A permit and survival.
Rick, Rick, please, Rick.
And. I think, I mean, I, I agree that business should, should be treated the same regardless of whether it's a small business or a franchise or anything like that. And I agree with the mayor that, I mean, there's certain areas that we have to be more cautious about because we have residents. So, I wouldn't be opposed if, if the applicant was willing to have somebody there on staff between ten and one to monitor, make sure that the city ordinances were being complied with, the noise was reduced, and all those things. If there was somebody there just for that purpose in that location, I wouldn't be opposed to one o'clock. But again, you'd have to be willing.
My question there, Abel, is who would be that person? And how would we monitor that person?
And that's the thing, Mayor. I think, I think us as a city, we have an obligation to, to, if this gentleman's been operating for two years, and where have we been? You know, I mean, we should have stopped him. We should have done something. We should have called the police. We should have shut him down. I mean, that, at the end of the day, he shouldn't have been doing that. He was. Luckily, we don't have issues that.
We did, no? We take him to court. I think. We're in court. Suzie, Suzie can speak to that.
Yes, I'll clarify that. There are at least one, maybe two citations that were given to this actual location. There are others, multiple others on the Griffin Parkway, on the Griffin location, but this one does have some that are pending in municipal court. So, they have enforced it in that sense. But we haven't gone as far as to seek a deck action and close it down.
Right. And so, what, I mean, I'm glad that the city is doing something then. I wasn't aware, obviously, but I just think that if, if you're willing to pay the expense, I think you're doing, I passed by the location. You're maintaining it. You're doing a great job with it. I just think that, you know, those hours are kind of late for that area, but if, if you're willing to invest with security guard, off-duty police officer, something to ensure that our ordinances are being followed, I wouldn't have a problem with one o'clock.
I agree. If they can get a security guard or off-duty cop.
I would really do it, just that.
Yes. And also pay the fines, I guess, that are pending in municipal court.
I do not like the fact that we gave him a no two years ago when we had a lot of issues with citizens. And he continued. I would like for him to only do it to ten o'clock.
Can that be a part of the motion?
I'm going to do so to ten o'clock.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit.
Mr. Bata, just to make sure, for the six months?
For six months.
For six months. As presented with the closing time of ten o'clock and also to, before the conditional use permit is issued, the pending fees should be paid as Bella said. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no?
No. No.
The motion carries three-two. And that is ordinance number fifty-three nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next item is a, it's a tabled item that my understanding is going to remain on the table, so.
Actually, let me see this one. Actually, there's no action because there's been a written request to withdraw this item.
Okay, so because we're not taking it off the table at the next meeting, that's just going to fizzle out, right?
It's been withdrawn.
Just been withdrawn. Okay, all right, just to be clear. Okay, the next item is a consent agenda, but I'm going to move things around a little bit and I'm going to go to unfinished business because we did hear a few people that wanted to see what we were going to do on this particular item. So, I'm moving to item number thirty-eight, which is a tabled item. Discussion and action to rescind.
Discussion and action to rescind parking on the grass ordinance of number 5000, 5001.
I'm moved to on table the item.
Second. There's a motion and a second to remove the item from the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Item 38 is a discussion and action to rescind parking, parking on the grass ordinance number 5001. This ordinance was created because our court enforcement officers were enforcing, based on a definition of off-street parking, requirements and not on an actual ordinance reflecting the parking on the grass. This ordinance was adopted by the council on March 22, 2021. Shortly after the adoption of this ordinance, staff received numerous complaints regarding the adoption of the ordinance. The complaints referred to city was only targeting the older subdivisions that don't have room for a two-car driveway. City officials received negative feedback. The postmaster had a concern, because the residents were parking on the street and blocking mailboxes, making it impossible to deliver the mail. On February 28, 2022, the ordinance was reconsidered either to enforce or rescind. And during that meeting, the council tabled the item and put a moratorium on issuing citations. In the meanwhile, the ordinance was revised. During a workshop held on April 3, 2023 with the council, the no parking on the grass concerns was discussed. The consensus from the council during the workshop was to rescind the ordinance, but still enforce the junk vehicles parked on the grass and the health and sanitation issues. PNC and staff recommended to rescind the ordinance. This is a public hearing. I know. This item is out before you.
Mayor, I would like to go ahead and just keep the ordinance as is.
And not rescind it.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to not rescind the ordinance, which is kind of a funny thing.
It's a double, it's a double negative.
Yes, it is. So just keep it. So just, can we just do a no action, then?
Cause a motion to-
It would be no action.
No, it would be no action.
It would be no action.
Cause the effect of it is, it goes back to its own place.
Okay. So no action, no vote. So the ordinance stays in place. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Amendment, and if I may, we can implement a, a warning notice to the residents. So that way, we can approach it that way, so that way, give them an opportunity to remedy the, the issue at hand.
That's a good idea. Okay. Thank you, Randy. All righty, the next item is another tabled item. It's a variance request by Quintanilla Headling Associates.
I'm moved to remove the item from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to remove the item, tabled item number 39, a variance request by Quintanilla Headling Associates. All in favor to remove the item from the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor and council, before you go into this, I would like to brief the, the council on this item to discuss certain legal matters under 551.071. The council would like to do so.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session, under that?
Well, we could just table it until we get to executive session. When we go into executive session, I'll add this to it.
All right. Okay, we'll do that, then. Then we'll-
We'll just, we'll-
We'll pause on it until we get to executive session.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So then we're gonna move to consent agenda.
I'm moved to approve that consent agenda, items 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve items number 20 through 30, with resolution number 1837 on item number 26, and resolution 1838 on-
27.
On number 27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, next, we're gonna have approvals and authorizations. The first item is number 31, final plat approval for Amber Grove subdivision.
Item number 31 is a final plat approval for Amber Grove subdivision. This is a subdivision of a tract of land containing five acres, being a parted portion out of Lot 42 Bellwood's company subdivision C. It's currently zoned R2 duplex fourplex. The developer is Real Estate Investment LLC, and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This is located 1,857 feet north of the intersection of Mile 2 North and Trosper Road. The developer is proposing 14 duplex fourplex, fourplex lots and one detention pond. Water will consist of an eight-inch waterline located on the east side of Trosper. Sewer services will tie into a proposed manhole located on the east side of Trosper. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to payment of capital store recovery fees, park fees, water district exclusion, and compliance with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
Okay.
I'm moved to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat approval, as presented. Any further discussion? Any comments? I would just like to, to make a note that Real Estate Investment LLC is not me. I am Real Estate Investment Company LLC, so just to be clear. Okay, all right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 32, authorization to award contract for the ultraviolet or UV disinfection system refurbishment to Xylem for wastewater treatment plant. The city mission has accepted Xylem for the UV system upgrade. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Xylem, as they are the sole source providers for all the equipment and software systems. The estimated cost is $530,000. ARPA funds will be used. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm moved to approve.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the contract for the ultraviolet disinfection system. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item? Mr. Mendiola?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Authorization to ratify emergency expenditures applicable to disaster declaration regarding severe weather beginning April 28, April of 28, 2023. Rental two gravel trucks. So we're renting two gravel trucks, or we rent one, to help us expedite the brush pickup.
Okay, all right.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the emergency expenditures applicable after the disaster declaration of the storm on 4/28/2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item?
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Mendiola.
Yes.
How much does it cost for a gravel truck?
Right now, it's costing us $8,900 a month of rental.
No, but to buy one?
To buy one, to purchase one, about $234,000.
In your opinion, do you think it's time that we need one?
Well, in the past couple of years, we've upgraded our fleet. We have seven brand-new trucks in the past two years, including the five older ones that we have still in play. So we have a total about, we have a total of 11 trucks running. With these trucks that we rented, we have 13 running throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next item?
Item number 34, authorization to approve emergency brush pickup services contract in the amount of not to exceed $100,000.
Is this additional help?
If this is additional help, yes, we're going, we're trying to get a contract to come out here and help us to expedite the brush pickup as fast as we can.
I'm moved to approve.
I second that. But where are you, do you have a plan of where you're gonna start?
Yes, ma'am. We're getting together.
Can you mail that?
Can Gran Hano be one of them, please?
I'm sorry?
Gran Hano?
Yes.
Cause they have, it's really bad.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I may add, so, so the areas that we'll look at is the southeast and the southwest quadrants. Staff is completed northwest and working currently in northeast. And so that would be the additional help in that, for that areas, those areas.
And Mayor, I may add, I just like to thank your, your fleet, your men. There's no women, right?
No, not yet.
It would be nice. But your men that work, you know, I know that they've been working tirelessly, and it's difficult. I know that residents pass by, and as soon as you pick up, there's more, because I think residents are taking the tree-cutting in stages.
Yes.
And so it kind of seems like we're not, but we really are, and I see it. So thank you.
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second to approve the emergency brush pickup services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Mayor and council, I'll be presenting this. Mr. Garcia is not here. But this is a three, essentially a three-party agreement for economic incentives agreement between City of Mission, Mission Economic Development Corporation, and Olive Garden Holdings LLC. The company proposes construct $4.9 million of a, which is a 7,800-square-foot Olive Garden restaurant on approximately 1.76 acres near Bryan Road and Expressway 83. In addition to the infrastructure and capital investment, Olive Garden also commits to creating at least 50 new local full-time equivalent jobs. The proposed economic incentive will be derived from the 1.5 municipal sales tax remitted to the city and the 0.5 sales tax remitted to MUDC on the sales of taxable items consumed at the restaurant. So this will be constituted as a sales tax annual payment that will be paid over the course of five years, but shall not exceed the aggregate of $500,000 for all five years. In addition, as part of the agreement, the restaurant will donate food through the Darden's Harvest Program with a minimal annual value of $5,000 to benefit the residents of Mission. And staff and city manager recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the economic incentive agreement between the City of Mission and Olive Garden Holdings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 36 is the approval of the March 2023 tax collection report. The 2023 total adjusted tax levy for taxes was $29,45,357.47, and the amount of the collections as of March 31st is $27,173,890.13, which represents 93.56% of the total 2022 tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for delinquent taxes was $2372,249.69, and the amount of collections as of March 31st, 2023, is $299,003.49, which represents 12.60% of the total tax levies from previous year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the collection report, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Item number 37 is the approval of the March 2023 financial statements. Total revenues for the month were $8,49,618, and total expenditures were $9,701,032, leaving an ending fund balance of $37,144,582. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Moved to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the March 2023 financial statements, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is the routine matters.
I guess I just have a couple announcements, ma'am. We are celebrating National EMS Week, May 21st to 27th, with the fire department providing lunches for the different shifts at the, for the fire stations. We will be sending out that information. Also, tomorrow, I do want to extend the invitation to everyone. We are having our first annual mental health event here at the Mission Event Center at 7:00 PM. It is, we are partnering up with the EM3, EM2 Hope, EM3, I'm sorry, Hope Foundation. This year, it is gonna be a very well-attended event. I invite everyone, it's a free event, to make awareness and educate for mental health. Again, at the Mission Event Center at 7:00 PM. We are expecting a, a large, we are partnering with our neighboring cities to include Palm View, Peñitas, Sullivan, La Jolla, to caravan over to the Mission Event Center and ended at the Mission Event Center. So I'm excited about that. We, again, free event for the community. We are also hosting a one-stop shop Wednesday, May 24th, 9 to 12, here at the Mission City Hall. Again, is to provide resources for, through our CWG program, and then also resources that we have for utility payments and rental assistance. We are also doing a food distribution, May 30th, with the RGV Food Bank, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, CWB FART. And city offices will be closed next Monday in observance of Memorial Day. We do have staff on call, if needed, for any emergencies or any issues that come around. That's it.
I don't have any comments.
I of course have comments, Mayor. So first and foremost, for all of you that were able to go to last Thursday, Mayor's Evening of Prayer, she focused it on mental health, so I think she deserves a huge round of applause for that. For finding, for, for understanding the significance of the stigma that a lot of our families go through with mental health. And, you know, I've sat here for various mayors, and she has really taken the lead on understanding the culture and the things that we need to do here in Mission, to kind of start talking about it. The event was a great success. I want to thank Ida Letima and all the pastors that really did that event, cause, I mean, it was just amazing. My daughter was very happy that night. And so with this coming event, the first 100 people get this, get this beautiful shirt. In the front, you're there for tomorrow night. In the front, it says, "You are enough." And in the back, it's a City of Mission logo, and it says, "Dear person behind me, the world is a better place with you in it. Love from the person in front of you." And so I welcome you to come to the event tomorrow. It's gonna be an amazing event. We have a lot of sponsors that went out of their way and also think, like Mayor, and myself, and the rest of the council, support this great cause. And I hope to see that it's gonna be the first of many events to come, and so that we could raise awareness to this and start talking about things that in our Hispanic culture, we are sometimes too afraid to talk about. And, you know, each and every one of you are enough. And as I said to the employees this morning, or this afternoon, for our luncheon, we just have to be kind to one another, cause you never know when somebody might need it. And I, I just am very happy that the City of Mission has led with this endeavor. It's one of its kind. I do know that EM3 Hope has started in Sullivan and then worked their way from the west. But the event as tomorrow night has never been that big. And Mayor, on the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to, to do this event in Mission. I know Edinburgh wants to do it next year, but Lourdes and her agency really love Mission. So I think the collaboration between all the cities is awesome. But I think the event is gonna be a big success, and I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Yes, I too would like to thank staff. Ida, you all did an amazing job. I regrettably could not be there, and I want you to know that I was probably in tears while not, not being able to, to be there, because it really, really did mean a lot to me. Oh my God, I just lost my train of thought. But my, my goal was to get, to have this, this as a valley, a valley incentive or promotion, because I spoke to almost every mayor throughout the valley and told them about what we were doing. And, and a lot of them joined in and did it in their hometowns, not in, not like we did, but in the, in another, in another fashion, in maybe a smaller venues, or... And some of the mayors and some of the elected officials also did, did attend our, our event. And they were very, very moved, which I, you know, I feel that, that, that part of the, of our job is to, to reach out and, and touch our residents in that special way as well. Not, not just, you know, picking up their trash and, and paving the streets. So, Ms. Jessica, thank you so much, and thank you, council- you, Council, for, for moving forward on, on these ideas and, and awareness. Anybody else? Abel? No. Beto? No. Okay. All righty. Mayor motion to go into executive session?
Sure move.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
So moved.
Oh, cute. Okay, that was a... And there's a... A hot sign that have mayor sign.
There a motion to reconvene?
So moved, mayor.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, it's to item number thirty-nine. The item remains on the table, open. Up to the council if they want to take any action on the item. That's one for the Papillon Square.
Okay. Mayor, I think on that one, we had given some direction to the city attorney to continue discussions with the applicant. I don't know if that needs to be in the form of a motion or...
Be the directive to continue discussions? I don't think we need a motion.
Well, I prefer, you know, just that's a motion to go ahead and make the motion if you have a second.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to continue negotiations on that item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, three zero.
Mayor, the only other item is the item that was tabled back on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. A consideration action of any regarding the evaluation duties, compensation and/or contract with the city manager. It's my understanding, based on discussion in executive session, that that item shall remain tabled at this time until the next meeting.
Okay. And I believe that is all our items that not left anything out. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.